So the party.
I get my name.
Is it state law that all these kids can play in our program? And there's nothing you can do to help them make them cover costs? They've already taken their share of money out of the state.
There's a fee. It's just a special thing. Change your brain. You know what, I don't think community is your purpose. Because it is your purpose. No, it's halfway out.
So the parochial and homeschoolers did not take much.
Yeah, I think that's what they were saying.
We're just kicked out of the gym.
Which one you want to talk about?
We'll just stay here and hold the whole night.
Yep. Call law.
I call it an order then November meeting of the Boardman Board of Education. We'll start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rich.
Mr. Nicholas Amstutz.
Aye.
Mr. Alfred Davis.
Here.
Mr. Mark Fokes.
Here.
Mr. John Lenders.
Here.
Mrs. Kimberly Palma.
Here.
Time is reserved at this point in the agenda for citizens to address the board according to policy VDDH. We have one request from Jared Cardillo, the principal at Boardman High School, to provide an update regarding Yes Fest.
Thank you. I just wanted to bring a special guest tonight. This is Derek Emerson. He is the owner of Chick-fil-A Southern Park. And Yes Fest is obviously something we put a lot of energy into over the last month and a half. It has been a team effort. It has been students from Boardman High School, teachers from Boardman High School, members of our community. We're proud to announce that we're probably going to have over 40 some vendors there tomorrow, and we're just very excited about it. But a big piece of that has been Derek and Chick-fil-A. When we first had this idea, I believe it was right around the time of our homecoming dance, and Derek was there working with our homecoming committee, getting food for the dance, and I had mentioned to him that we had potentially a community thing coming up, and he said, absolutely, count me in, I'd love to be part of it. And we met in my office, Cindy Fernback, myself, and Derek, and it only took about three minutes for him to say, sign me up a part of it. Chick-fil-A made a significant contribution to the Yes Fest, and I think if you were at the game Friday night, we had the white out, the kids wore the shirts, and if you're there tomorrow, you're going to see how significant that contribution was. But it's nice to be able to partner with somebody in the community, it's nice to have somebody who shares the concern of our students like Derek, and I just wanted to present him to the board. You know, I know a lot of you guys wanted to meet him just to say thank you. So Derek Emerson from Chick-fil-A.
Appreciate you partnering with us, Derek. That's quite a gesture on your part. I know how much money Chick-fil-A has put into this project, and it's worthwhile to help turn the tide in terms of students making good decisions. So we're happy about you taking part of this, and hopefully this is just the start of a partnership for the future, for the good of Boardman Schools and the Boardman Community. So thank you very much on behalf of administration and board.
It was my pleasure, and it's a great opportunity to see more than just a one-time event, but I think it's going to be something that will be long-lasting and make an impact on kids for a longer period of time than just one day. So we're happy to be a part of that. So, thank you.
Jared did mention the team effort, but I wanted to recognize Mr. Maroney here as one of our student leaders who took part and was one of the team members to help plan the Yes Fest. So gentlemen, thank you very much.
Back to you.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to approve it?
So move.
Second.
Move second. Kim.
No questions, Eric. Edit. Okay. Rich.
Mr. Amstutz.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Fokes.
Aye.
Mr. Lenders.
Aye.
Mrs. Palma.
Aye.
I don't believe there's any unfinished business. We move on to board members' business. I guess there's two things I wanted to cover. The first being, if we had the information, if we wanted to try and set the January organizational meeting, which I believe has to be set by January 15th. So I don't know what the Saturdays are off the top of my head, the 4th and the 11th, because we typically try to do our January workshop and kind of organizational meeting. So I don't know if anyone knows their schedule that far ahead, or at least if we wanted to kind of start talking about it now and then set the date in the December board meeting. So.
How's the 11th look for?
Well, I think isn't... The 11th would be better for me.
I think I could make the 11th work, so. Okay.
Tentatively, and then walk it in in December?
Yeah. Do you want to have a motion? 9:00 AM in your office? I moved that we set the January organizational meeting of the Boardman Board of Education on Saturday, January 11th at 9:00 AM at BCNS.
Second.
Can you make it? Yep. Rich.
Mr. Fokes.
Aye.
Mr. Lenders.
Aye.
Mrs. Palma.
Aye.
Typically, we cover recognition later in the meeting, but we do have some special guests in the room today in the form of our boys cross-country team, who we wanted to kind of welcome and congratulate for their outstanding season today. So I guess I'll pass it on to Mr. Lozary.
Yeah, I've always been an admirer of the cross-country team, and we had you here, I'm sure it was last year or two years ago, I think it was last year, where we came in a whisper of making it to state. And I know that Coach Phillips and Coach Phillips and Coach Dunn and this whole team dedicated themselves to getting to state, and you are to be commended for that, at those efforts. And I saw you guys running in the park on Wednesdays, I saw you running the park on Sundays, and the community doesn't know the time that you guys put in, and it's much, much appreciated by Board of Education, the administration, and you made us all proud. I'd like to ask Mr. Cardillo to give a few words and then introduce our coaches, please.
I wasn't expecting that, but.
Ah, too good, then.
I would say the nicest thing that I've seen, and we introduced the guys at the game Friday night, just the humility of these group of kids, and we have a state champion in the group, and as they announced our players, you didn't know who was the best runner to the last runner. That was true also, the way they supported one another. It's truly a team, it's truly a group of just great guys under a great set of coaches, and really made Boardman proud. It was very exciting every week to have them come back with a different trophy, whether it was the regional, sectional I think was first, and then the regional, I think I have that right, but it was exciting. They let the school be part of it, they shared in it with one another, and probably the best compliment that they could receive is, we had a busload full of students who went down to Columbus to watch them run. And cross-country's not the most famous sport, it's not the most popular sport, it's not the sport that's most attended by students, but I think that was a great compliment that we were able to fill a spirit bus with our students to go down there and cheer them on, and that just tells you what kind of guys these are. Everyone was rooting for them, there's no egos in the group, and just a great, great group of individuals. So Coach, do you want to maybe step up and say something?
Thanks. Well, I want to thank Mr. Cardillo, obviously, for the support he gave us during the course via him. Mr. Huco and Mrs. Skorsky did a fantastic job on getting that spirit bus organized, you know, being willing for us to be able to present them with the trophies and get the guys out of class for a few minutes for three consecutive Mondays in the very first period was also nice. But their support for this team is second to none as far as other schools around Mahoning, Trumbull, Columbian County, so it's certainly a special thing that we're very appreciative of, especially the hard work that Mrs. Skorsky, Mr. Huco did for the student tailgate at the regional meeting, and certainly board members that were there that day at Boardman, and then were at our banquet a couple of weeks ago, and Mr. Lozary as well. We certainly appreciate that. That doesn't happen in most other communities. It's a great group. Unfortunately, most of them are seniors. The last two years we came, we're like, oh, they're a young team, and the next year, you know, they're going to be seniors. Now, you know, five of them are graduating, so it's a little bit bittersweet to see them go, but what they accomplished is not going to be repeated, and you know, hopefully for our coaches' sake, it can be repeated, but some of the accomplishments they had both for their school as individuals is probably not going to be duplicated anytime soon. So I'm glad the community has appreciated that, I'm glad that the administration has appreciated that as well, as well as the students at Boardman High School. You know, cross-country became cool in Boardman the last three years, and that's a tough thing to do, and it's because we have a special group of guys, so I certainly appreciate them. You know, they make the three of us look good, and that's not an easy thing to do, if you take a look at the three of us. So you certainly, you know, they deserve the credit, and like I said, you know, we have a state champion, but you would never know. You know, we're a team-oriented group first, winning the federal league, winning the district, winning the regional, getting to Columbus. It was team goals, it was never individual goals. So you know, now we have three of them competing in Wisconsin on Saturday for the right to go to a national championship in San Diego. We feel like we could get all three of our guys there, you know, not just one of them. You know, that's our goal, to get all three. So you know, hopefully that can happen, and we could, you know, spend a nice weekend in San Diego in a couple of weeks while it's snowing up here. These guys deserve the credit, and I certainly am appreciative of them.
If you don't mind, could you introduce them and have them step up, step forward, please?
Sure. Well, first right here with his voice scout materials tonight is Trevor Layden, one of our seniors.
Hi.
I don't know.
Watch it come on up.
Oh, okay.
Everybody can see.
We have Jake Kelly, another one of our seniors. Justin Maroney, a senior. Let's get the theme of our senior class. Alan Burns, a senior. Fortunately, we have two sophomores here, so you know, our future is still bright. We have sophomore Adam Dealy, sophomore Nathan Hadley, and senior Mark Hadley. The good thing about this group, and it was really nice, the state championship as well, the coaches association recognizes Academic All Ohio. We have to compete at the state meet, now the GPA 3.5 or higher, and when we came to get our certificates, they ran out. There was that many high-achieving students in divisions three, two, and one in boys and girls cross-country. We had six of our seven guys achieve Academic All Ohio, and that's really a great accomplishment too. And to have that, to have cross-country to be an academic, student-athlete-oriented sport is a special thing as well, and these guys certainly are a big part of that. So they excel, you know, running, but they also excel in the classroom. We have several of our guys as high honor students, 4.0 students, and that's something not every sport can say, so we certainly want to recognize them for that as well.
Thank you. Right, on behalf of the board, I'd like to give you a certificate of excellence, starting with Mr. Saxton. Could you please run the golf and shake our hands?
Congratulations.
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 Sorry to embarrass you.
I appreciate the congratulations. Thank you.
Still seeing the park.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Come on, Coach.
You too.
Get the start, because they're dark.
Mr. Saxton over there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Now, this gentleman to my right with the little movie camera, he is actually videotaping this for the internet, so you can see your little presentation here. If you log on to Western Reserve Media, westernreserve news?
Western Reserve News.
Western Reserve News.
Dot com.
So you can find yourself on the internet, westernreservenews.com.
I guess before we excuse you guys, you know, we just wanted to congratulate you and thank you all once again, but I think what really struck me was that the leadership you guys have. Like, I noticed it at the banquet, how you guys were congratulating all the freshmen, the younger kids that came up. You guys really helped, especially the seniors, kind of build this program back up, and that leadership, you guys can use in anything, you know, outside of sports. You already saw Mr. Maroney use it with the Yes Fest, so I think those are great skills you guys can use in college and world, and I don't know, maybe we'll see one of you guys on the board in the future. But I will excuse you guys, and you guys can go and get ice cream or something.
One more comment. You know, Coach spoke about three years ago in building tradition, building a program. Now, I look every year in the paper, and I see McDonald, Maplewood, McDonald, Maplewood, and time in, year in, and year out. Depends on, doesn't matter on who's on the team, they're always there. So hopefully that same tradition has been built here at Boardman, and you seniors set the model, set the example for the underclassmen with your attitude and your encouragement. So thank you for your leadership, senior class, and the challenges there, underclassmen, to keep it going. Thank you.
Gee, you have the short straw, or what?
For voice count.
Oh. He wasn't kidding, was he?
No.
Poor kid. You know, we're hoping to get out of here till 10:00.
There's extra credit for you, though. Talk to Mr. Cardillo, he'll take care of it.
Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second. Any questions? Rich.
Mr. Lenders.
Aye.
Mrs. Palma.
Aye.
Mr. Amstutz.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Fokes.
Aye.
Mr. Lenders.
Aye.
The consent agenda has been approved. Now on to treasurer's business, Mr. Stilwell.
First item, there's a total of nine donations. The first is to West Boulevard Elementary School. Its school supplies valued at $1,000 from Office Max. Donation is part of the Eight Day Made Better Program. Second, to West Boulevard also, $150 from Great American Opportunities for the Blockout Bowling Program. To Market Street Elementary School, $99 for Target tape charge. Boardman High School, $6,000 from Chick-fil-A. Southern Park Mall, Boardman High School, Yes Fest. The donation will be used to purchase Yes Fest t-shirts for those students who signed the pledge. Also to Boardman High School, $750 for expert design. Be used towards Yes Fest t-shirts. Stadium Drive, $75 from VFW 1423. The donation will be used for Veterans Day's breakfast. Also, Stadium Drive, $37 for Target. Stadium Drive, a photo of the fourth grade class and a photo of the staff from Robert's Cent Studio and Boardman High School. Boardman Spark clothing valued $150 from the Dollar General Store, number 1554 South Avenue, Boardman. To go towards students who need the clothing items donated, we're giving to Karen Canal, VHS. Program coordinator, they have for your approval.
Is there a motion to approve or accept the donations?
So move.
Second.
Rich.
Mrs. Palma.
Aye.
Mr. Amstutz.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Fokes.
Aye.
Mr. Lenders.
Aye.
The donations have been approved, accepted.
Next item, student activity athletic accounts. Recommended the board approve the purpose, goals, and budgets for various student activity and athletic accounts. All goals and purposes are unfounded. Treasurer's office for review. Each year we do this, and they are estimated their income and their expenses. It's for your approval.
Is there a motion to approve the goal, the purpose, goals, and budgets?
So move.
Second.
Any questions?
I could ask it here, or I could ask it in the policies. We lost a couple?
Yes.
Organizations?
Yes.
Because they no longer exist, or because they didn't comply?
No longer exist, the speech one, for example.
Community theater.
Yeah. That wouldn't be in this, this is the non-hoster accounts.
Okay. I'm going to ask it again when we get the policy.
Sure.
Okay.
Rich.
Mr. Amstutz.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Fokes.
Aye.
Mr. Lenders.
Aye.
Then typically, we cover recognition later in the meeting, but we do have some special guests in the room today in the form of our boys' cross-country team, who we wanted to kind of welcome and congratulate for their outstanding season today, so I guess I'll pass it on to Mr. Lozary.
Yeah, I've always been an admirer of the cross-country team, and we had you here, I'm sure it was last year or two years ago, I think it was last year, where we came within a whisper of making it to state, and I know that Coach Phillips and Coach Phillips and Coach Dunn and this whole team dedicated themselves to getting to state, and you are to be commended for that, at those efforts. And I saw you guys running in the park on Wednesdays, I saw you running in the park on Sundays, and the community doesn't know the time that you guys put in, and it's much, much appreciated by Board of Education, the administration, and you made us all proud. I'd like to ask Mr. Cardillo to give a few words and then introduce our coaches, please.
I wasn't expecting that, but.
Ah, too good, then.
I would say the nicest thing that I've seen, and we introduced the guys at the game Friday night, just the humility of these group of kids, and we have a state championship, a state champion in the group, and as they announced our players, you didn't know who was the best runner to the last runner. That was true also, the way they supported one another. It's truly a team, it's truly a group of just great guys under a great set of coaches, and really made Boardman proud. It was very exciting every week to have them come back with a different trophy, whether it was the regional, sectional I think was first, and then the regional, I think I have that right, but it was exciting. They let the school be part of it, they shared in it with one another, and probably the best compliment that they could receive is, we had a busload full of students who went down to Columbus to watch them run. And cross-country's not the most famous sport, it's not the most popular sport, it's not the sport that's most attended by students, but I think that was a great compliment that we were able to fill a spirit bus with our students to go down there and cheer them on, and that just tells you what kind of guys these are. Everyone was rooting for them, there's no egos in the group, and just a great, great group of individuals. So Coach, do you want to maybe step up and say something?
Thanks. Well, I want to thank Mr. Cardillo, obviously, for the support he gave us during the course via him. Mr. Huco and Mrs. Skorsky did a fantastic job on getting that spirit bus organized, you know, being willing for us to be able to present them with the trophies and get the guys out of class for a few minutes for three consecutive Mondays in the very first period was also nice. But their support for this team is second to none as far as other schools around Mahoning, Trumbull, Columbian County, so it's certainly a special thing that we're very appreciative of, especially the hard work that Mrs. Skorsky, Mr. Huco did for the student tailgate at the regional meeting, and certainly board members that were there that day at Boardman, and then were at our banquet a couple of weeks ago, and Mr. Lozary as well. We certainly appreciate that. That doesn't happen in most other communities. It's a great group. Unfortunately, most of them are seniors. The last two years we came, we're like, oh, they're a young team, and the next year, you know, they're going to be seniors. Now, you know, five of them are graduating, so it's a little bittersweet to see them go, but what they accomplished is not going to be repeated, and you know, hopefully for our coaches' sake, it can be repeated, but some of the accomplishments they had, both for their school as individuals, is probably not going to be duplicated anytime soon. So I'm glad the community has appreciated that, I'm glad that the administration has appreciated that as well, as well as the students at Boardman High School. You know, cross-country became cool in Boardman the last three years, and that's a tough thing to do, and it's because we have a special group of guys, so I certainly appreciate them. You know, they make the three of us look good, and that's not an easy thing to do, if you take a look at the three of us. So you certainly, you know, they deserve the credit, and like I said, you know, we have a state champion, but you would never know. You know, we're a team-oriented group first, winning the federal league, winning the district, winning the regional, getting to Columbus. It was team goals, it was never individual goals. So you know, now we have three of them competing in Wisconsin on Saturday for the right to go to a national championship in San Diego. We feel like we could get all three of our guys there, you know, not just one of them. You know, that's our goal, to get all three. So you know, hopefully that can happen, and we could, you know, spend a nice weekend in San Diego in a couple of weeks while it's snowing up here. These guys deserve the credit, and I certainly am appreciative of them.
If you don't mind, could you introduce them and have them step up, step forward, please?
Sure. Well, first right here with his voice scout materials tonight is Trevor Layden, one of our seniors.
Hi.
I don't know.
Watch it come on up.
Oh, okay.
Everybody can see.
We have Jake Kelly, another one of our seniors. Justin Maroney, a senior. Alan Burns, a senior. Unfortunately, we have two sophomores here, so you know, our future is still bright. We have sophomore Adam Dealy, sophomore Nathan Hadley, and senior Mark Hadley. The good thing about this group, and it was really nice, the state championship as well, the coaches association recognized Academic All Ohio. We have to compete at the state meet, now the GPA 3.5 or higher, and when we came to get our certificates, they ran out. There was that many high-achieving students in divisions three, two, and one in boys and girls cross-country. We had six of our seven guys achieve Academic All Ohio, and that's really a great accomplishment too. And to have that, to have cross-country to be an academic, student-athlete-oriented sport is a special thing as well, and these guys certainly are a big part of that. So they excel, you know, running, but they also excel in the classroom. We have several of our guys as high honor students, 4.0 students, and that's something not every sport can say, so we certainly want to recognize them for that as well.
Thank you. Right, on behalf of the board, I'd like to give you a certificate of excellence, starting with Mr. Saxton. Could you please run the golf and shake our hands?
Congratulations.
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 Thank you.
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 Now, this gentleman to my right with the little movie camera, he is actually videotaping this for the internet, so you can see your little presentation here. If you log on to Western Reserve Media, westernreserve news?
Western Reserve News.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Rich?
Mr. Folks?
Aye.
Mr. Lenders?
Aye.
Mrs. Palma?
Aye.
Mr. Amstutz?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Item C is the Mahone County Educational Service Center contract, recommended the board approve the contract with the Mahone County ESC to provide services to students qualifying under the Bureau of Vocational Rehabilitation VRP-3 Project, as shown in attachment 7. Previously this school year, we have approved this contract, this is an additional service that previously was bundled with all the ESC services, and what they have done is they've pulled it out and added it as a separate service, in case you didn't have any students that fell under this, and we do have eight or 10 students who would receive services, so if the district, if we didn't have students being served, we could choose not to take it, in the past, it was all bundled together, so I ask that you approve the revised contract as found in attachment 7.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Rich?
Mr. Lenders?
Aye.
Mrs. Palma?
Aye.
Mr. Amstutz?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Folks?
Aye.
In attachment 8, those are, or that is the recognition of those students who are here this evening, we will also send out a letter congratulating them, to them and the coaches, their accomplishments, ask for your approval.
Is there a motion to grant the recognition?
So moved.
Second. Rich?
Mrs. Palma?
Aye.
Mr. Amstutz?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Folks?
Aye.
Mr. Lenders?
Aye.
Item E under superintendent, ESC contract, recommended the board approve the amended services contract with the Mahone County Educational Service Center, as found in attachment 9. This actually is, I apologize, this is a redundancy of 7, 7 is, okay, I see what you've done, 7 is for the VRP-3 project, 9 is the overall contract, it includes the marketing, I'm sorry, it's the marketing one, I apologize.
Is there a motion to approve the contract?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
Any questions? Rich?
Mr. Amstutz?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Folks?
Aye.
Mr. Lenders?
Aye.
Mrs. Palma?
Aye.
Item F, Jane Howes, I spoke about this about a month ago, I've amended this somewhat, recommended the board approve the hiring of Mrs. Howes for Title I Instruction and Governance Services effective December 1st, 2013, for the remainder of the 13, 14 school year, this position's funded totally through Title I funds, Mrs. Howes will be paid a per diem rate of $18.41 for 116 days of instruction, and a per diem rate of 222.61 for 141 days of governance services, and this is something to, in order to help Dr. Ross out, who is spending a lot of time with state initiatives right now, the implementation of the new learning standards, implementation of FIP, and OPETES, and a few other things that she's working on, so I ask for your approval of Jane Howes to give some relief there to her office.
Is there a motion to approve the hiring?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Do you foresee that being, for as long as she's here, being paid for with title funds?
I'm sorry, I.
Do you foresee that being covered with title funds for as long as she's here?
Yes, and the beauty of the position that she's also teaching, and so she can serve as a role model, instructional coach, people can, teachers can come in and observe her, and she could also give support to the Title I tutors, a lot of them not having classroom experiences, so she's really a perfect person for the position with her outstanding abilities for classroom instruction, and also her administrative abilities, that's the.
Rich?
Officer Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Folks?
Aye.
Mr. Lenders?
Aye.
Mrs. Palma?
Aye.
Mr. Amstutz?
Aye.
Item 10 gives a rundown of events coming up. Tomorrow night, we have conference night, and as you all know, tomorrow morning, starting at 8 o'clock, we have the Yes Fest, and I think I've sent you all the schedule of the different times for the Yes Fest, first, 8 o'clock, 7:50?
Probably won't be set, Stone, but yeah, roughly 8 o'clock, 8, 8 o'clock, 8:45, 12:30, and 1:30 will be roughly, two in the morning, two in the evening, or two in the afternoon.
And you're also invited to lunch, board members, at 11:00. Other items on here, we have a number of holiday concerts, and winter recess, the classes resume Monday, January 6th, back to you, John.
Now on to reports, legislative report from Mr. Amstutz.
Okay, thanks, John, a few things, nothing too earth-shattering, I guess, several things in committee down in Columbus, I mentioned a couple of them, House Bill 193, it's a revision of the high school diploma requirements, it is in conference right now, and testimony is being held, one of the things I'm kind of wondering is if Mr. Cardillo's recommendation might stand as it relates to some of the people that actually graduate from our high school that don't accept their diploma, would be nice for our graduation rate. House Bill 334 has to do with the expulsion of students, again, they're hearing testimony, reason for expulsion, on different reasons for expulsion, and one of the things is if they threaten to endanger the health or safety of students, I don't believe they can be expelled for that now, so threatening is not expulsion, but it could be in the future. House Bill 342 seeks to modify the Straight A Grant Fund, I'm not exactly sure what they're trying to do there, but trying to modify that, and House Bill 237 is one that should be interesting, it's prohibiting the implementation of the new teaching standards, more commonly referred to as.
Tell me now.
Common Core.
Have them decide now, before we do all of our work.
Exactly, so they're obviously discussing that, and I think there's been a lot of testimony in favor of keeping Common Core, it seemed like from what I read, that, and quite a few school districts down in Columbus testifying in favor of Common Core, so, I know it's not your turn for it, but it's what they're still firming at now.
Understand.
Thank you, and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Amstutz, under president's comments, I guess the only thing, I guess would just like to give a shout out to the, all the cast and crew that did an amazing job in Phantom, I think all of us up here went to see it, and it was truly remarkable for a high school show, so maybe we could look to give them maybe for board recognition, so.
They do need to be recognized, the Department of Public Health is outstanding.
We have them sing while they're here. I'm not kidding.
As long as I don't have to sing, I'm fine, yeah.
Fine with that, if you don't sing, too.
Hey, John, you know, Mr. Cardillo had a great point, after the play we saw Thursday night, and then the kids tonight, I said, it's that that makes you proud of being part of, you know, Boardman Schools, it really is, it's a kind of refresher, sometimes you go day to day. Yeah, you do, and it's just, it's amazing, amazing.
Next on the agenda is executive session, I move that we go into executive session for a conference with our attorney concerning disputes involving pending or imminent court action.
Second.
Who's the first?
He told me to make the motion, right?
Oh, okay, yes, okay. Rich?
Mr. Folks?
Aye.
Mr. Lenders?
Aye.
Mrs. Palma?
Aye.
Mr. Amstutz?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
I didn't catch that, yeah, he probably even told me that, he was disgusted doing that.